Okay, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting for the month of February 2018 of the Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners. First item of business is to accept our agenda and also deal with any remote attendance. I'm not aware of anybody seeking to remotely attend, but there has been a suggested change to the agenda. We have a representative from the Fair Engineering firm, and I was seeking the board's indulgence to move his item up immediately after the UPDAC report, given that Roger is here tonight, so.
Sounds good to me.
Moved.
Moved and...
Seconded.
That's been...
I was just muttering.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion on the point? All in favor of modifying the agenda?
Aye.
Aye opposed, that carries unanimously, so we will proceed with the agenda as modified. So, next item is public comment, is there anybody here from the public wishing to comment to us? Don't see any of that, and staff introductions, we got new staff, I thought, but they're not being introduced.
It started yesterday. Next month.
Next month, okay. Okay, then, that brings us to the UPDAC report. Roger, I thank you for coming out tonight.
Good to be here. Your report courses, my report is in your packets, just a couple comments that I wanted to add to those. We got a, we had a wonderful report from Elsie Hedgesbeth at our meeting, and one of the things I think that it helped me to understand was that while we, with Elsie Beckhugh's help, we do get copies of your packets and everything and have that option, the reports that we give don't really give us the entire scope of what the staff do on a day-to-day basis. So, when we, when Elsie talked to us about the kinds, the ways in which the Rec Department was already addressing the needs of the underserved, we were very impressed, and I think surprised at how much had already been done. How much of that was already in place before UPDAC raised the issue in 2012, I don't know how much of it followed that, but we were, we were very impressed with that, and I, kudos to the staff for being so responsive. In some ways, it's almost intimidating because it's like, well, okay, now how are we going to add to this in terms of advice? There were a couple people on UPDAC that were concerned about tuition and fees and those kinds of things, and I think Corky did a good job of addressing that, appreciate that. The other thing was when Tim pointed out to us that this issue was first raised by UPDAC, and I'm sure it was raised in the, among staff before that, in 2012, and we as a group meeting in 2017, 2018, were kind of following up on that. In some ways, it puts an onus on us to say, all right, what kinds of things are we going to initiate? Are we going to advise that may affect UPDAC's, that will be there in three, five, 10 years? I don't know. So, I don't know yet, and I think it gives us an item on our agenda in terms of what are the issues that we, or what is the issue that we think is crucial for us to address, so.
Yeah, it was a, it was, it was a good meeting, and I think that it's, I think it's really important that we, that we've reminded UPDAC or that we've explained to them because, you know, rotating there isn't anybody left from that 2012, 2012 group, and I think that to see that that ball really got, that first push to that ball really came from UPDAC gives them some sense, or a better sense, that they're not just sitting there that fourth Tuesday and, you know, talking a little and then going home, that the effect that they have really is important, and it's, it's important to the board, but it's important to the whole community because it makes a huge difference to things that they do.
And it was interesting, as I looked around the room, I realized how diverse UPDAC is, and I don't know if that's always been the case, but that, that in and of itself says something about, about the strides that the Park District is making.
Right, and I think a lot of the new UPDAC members are self-nominated, which is, which is even better because it means that they want to be there and that they felt comfortable enough, wherever they were, to come and say, you know, I'd like to be, I'd like to be part of this, so that's a comfort to me.
And I would just like to point out, it has always been the purview of UPDAC to raise issues on its own. Not that it's absolutely necessary every year, every season, but we count on all of you out there in the community with your eyes and ears and talking to neighbors that I don't know and probably maybe none of the board members here do know, that it may be a slow process, but getting that filtered back to the staff and to the board is very important, and this underserved thing really did highlight that most recently, but there've been, there've been other efforts and other kinds of things over the years. It's not an annual sort of thing that there's a big important initiative comes out, but it's happened a lot in the 30 years plus that UPDAC's been existed.
It's really good that there's not a big burning thing every year.
Yeah, exactly.
And there's a lot of daily operational things that have changed over the years from comments that we've heard, you know, how can we address that in a different way? So, it's very beneficial.
Planning and development as well.
And, you know, it's, it's often, even if a particular issue is being dealt with in some way, new eyes and a new voice asking the question, well, why do you address it in exactly this way, does get both board and staff actually thinking about that, well, maybe there's a slightly different approach could be taken to the, to the same kind of issue, and that makes a difference over the years, too, it really does.
It's good to hear.
Way for UPDAC.
Are there any other questions for Roger and his report? Well, thank you very much for coming out this evening, we, it's always good to see the UPDAC chair here, appreciate you doing it.
You're welcome, I'm glad to come.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next item of business, we modified the agenda to bring item, roman numeral seven E up, so we will...
Just want to introduce Roland White from Fairgram, he's here to answer any questions, walk through the proposal for the Crystal Lake Park one-way circulation study. I think the planning staff might want to say a few words.
Yeah, Roland White's a project manager, currently our project manager, actually, with the ITUP project, and we approached him and Fairgram in December to really, to bring us a proposal to study this one-way concept. It's been cited in a number of our previous planning studies, and it's been well-received by community groups that it's been shared with, but we wanted, and we feel like this is the best time to do a more in-depth analysis of this one-way concept, and with that also do an evaluation of the current road conditions and provide another opportunity for public input, so with that, Derek has any...
I might just mention that, you know, when this idea for the one-way trail concept first came up during our Trail Master Plan study, it was an RPC idea, and then we thought, well, that's really interesting, and we kept talking about it, and the more we talked about it, the more we got excited about it, the more we shared it with other organizations and agencies, the more they were excited about it. We shared it with the Greenways and Trails Planning Group, and they shared some examples of other communities that have done that, and we've visited them now, so we've seen a lot of success, but we always felt like it was something we wanted to really analyze with the benefit of some traffic engineering, and so that's what Roland is here to propose this evening. The road analysis was an idea, actually, that Michael recommended when we met and reviewed it with the Finance Committee. The thought is, you know, let's make sure we've got a good road to work with before we invest a lot in terms of...
That's if you haven't driven in the park and don't already know.
With that, we'll hand over to Roland.
Thanks, Derek. Let me just first say I'm just thrilled to be here. I'm a resident of Urbana, I used to live next to Phillips Recreation Center and Crystal Lake Park, because it's one of my favorite destinations to bring my daughters and spend time, and I really think it's just one of the most fantastic parks in any community that I've been to, so it's an honor to be potentially a part of this fantastic project. You know, over the years, my attention, 25 years of kind of experience, the, you get to look at what's your favorite kind of thing to do, and active transportation is really my, my favorite focus area in transportation engineering. Sort of the nexus of public health and, and active transportation and parks and recreation really has come to the forefront in the last few years. It wasn't the thinking 20 years ago, but it really is, it's encouraged by all levels of different agencies, so it's great to be a part of this effort. I will go over the scope, try to be brief, and then see if you have any, any questions. The way that we, we talked about this with your, with your staff, with your team, was to, to have a stepwise approach where we would have study and report phase, and, and then a public input phase, and then design plans and specifications. So, we wouldn't want to really get ahead of ourselves, we want to make sure and check off with you and with the public that this is where you want to go, and then move on to the next phase, and so that's kind of the way we, we structured that. In the study and report phase, we would review previous studies and planning efforts, which you have some great examples of that. We have the COAT traffic counts, for example, from the ITUP grant application. IDOT and COAT's RPC both have traffic information on surrounding streets that we'll draw from. We want to do a topographic survey of the main entrance off of Broadway Avenue because there might need to be some alterations there to curb lines and/or the median, and we want to make sure and have good survey work in that area. We would do a photographic survey of the, of the main park roadway, documenting notable features, pavement, parking areas, key locations, pedestrian crossings, and all the way through this, I would say, you know, we'll be coordinating with your staff to make sure that we're picking up those things that have been highlighted in past studies and things that from their experience they know are important. Then, as mentioned, we would look at the pavement condition, and I'm glad that you guys want to do that, because long-term, really, the, the road will need maintenance and repair at some point, so getting that information in the report to give you some information for long-term planning for that maintenance is, is excellent. I think, you know, as, as we look at this, you have some technical sort of examples of this on, on, on regular roadways and streets, road diets and concepts such as contra-flow bike lanes where you have traffic going the opposite direction as, as bicycles and users. So, we have some sort of conventional examples that lend themselves to this. There are some other examples, as you've noted, in other locations where this has been done successfully, so sort of blending that experience from other locations with the conventional transportation engineering, we'll be able to help put some engineering behind the concept because we want to try to assure the public that you've well-thought-through and it's safe, and, and I think that, you know, with a little bit of effort in engineering, we'll be able to, to convey that we've done our homework and, and that we've made it as best of an alternative as it can be.
Roland, as you mentioned, safety, it occurs to me that, you know, folks watching at home may not be completely aware of what we're talking about, but the idea is that you have a, a one-way road system and the other half gets converted to pedestrian and bike traffic. Currently, that's happening, people are out there on their bikes, they're walking, there were strollers, and so this will make that condition that much more safe. The idea is that that would then tie in with the past work that Roland's currently designing for the ITUP grant project, creating a loop trail system that's very easy to navigate, and, and we know that people really enjoy our loop trail systems in Meadowbrook Parks, this will be another offering along those lines.
Thank you. It's, it's important to talk about what, exactly what it is we're considering here, isn't it? And then, as we look at the entryways, that will be key, as, you know, we have an assumption that probably we would, the one-way would start coming off of Park Street and go through the park that way and come out on the Broadway, but I think we'll test that assumption just to make sure that it makes sense, and when you do that, you're changing the traffic conditions at those entrances, and so we want to make sure that we configure that, come up with a plan that will be compliant with traffic laws and the manual and uniform traffic control devices, et cetera, and have, you know, if, if it is do not enter, or there's some changing in lanes, et cetera, we'll have that planned out and tested. So, the other thing is, as Derek mentioned, we want to evaluate the connectivity of this proposed pathway with existing trails and the shared use ITUP trail that we're building right now, and so maybe there's short distances of pathways that we need to, to design and construct to provide that connectivity. As we get into this, I think, in my experience, when you change the, the function of a roadway different than what people have been used to for many years, it can produce some level of discussion, dare I say controversy, but that's, that's, that's why...
Very diplomatically put.
Yeah, that's why public input and discussion is vitally important, and we've included a good block of time for that effort to coordinate with your staff and get that input and have that discussion to make sure that the stakeholders understand why we want to do this, and then get the questions, any questions answered that they might have about. Sometimes, it's, as you guys probably know, it surprises you, someone will come up with an idea that you hadn't thought of, a particular connection or something, and it's just, I love that kind of process. After we move through that, if you should so choose, then we would move on to the design phase, and it's, this is not a, we're not redesigning the road and rebuilding it, it's more of a traffic control plan that we would be developing, striping signage at the entry points to direct vehicle or traffic correctly, and potentially improving crosswalks at key locations. So, that would be the nature of the design plans, but we also have, as we discussed, the pavement evaluation to see how that, short-term and long-term, what, what is recommended for the pavement.
Have we given any thought to changing parking?
Just going to ask the same question.
Great minds.
I think staff's had a lot of discussion about that, obviously, when, back in 2007 when we did the master plan, we spent quite a bit of time talking about the road and the trails. If you may recall, those who were with us at that time, one of the ideas was, could we completely eliminate the road because we could access the main facilities from the north and the south, but through our public input process, we heard comments that people still like that ability, particularly older residents, to be able to have that drive through the park experience, you know, if you're not able to ride a bicycle or ride. So, we really analyzed that and thought that that had some merit, and that that's a recreational pursuit, and the road's already there, wasn't like we're building a road in a natural area. And so, we could see then the road and the trails had a strong connection. Parking was the next, obviously, when you have events and activities, there's never enough parking, but I think Urbana Park District's done a great job of balancing what I call green over gray, so we tend to value our green spaces more than the gray, and then public is often willing to either have different parking arrangements or maybe perhaps willing to walk a little bit further. We do have, you know, a number of parking areas, but I think that's a critical part we want to look at, is there enough parking? If something changed, is there a way to, you know, make up that parking? What's that balanced equation? So, I think...
Or just completely...
It's just not accessible from the same direction, so it's, I'm thinking of like the stuff that's, we direct people for overflow for the pool, wherever, but now you have to drive all the way around where you could enter from Broadway and get there.
Exactly, so I think that's some of the alternatives, you know, that they'll be looking at, where do people walk in, ride in, where does the parking, how do they go to where they're needing to go?
And I think, long-term, the goal is to increase the usage even more of this, like with the long-term plan, so...
Absolutely.
I think the special event lot comes into play, too, as we increase the usage.
More often than maybe in the past.
Yeah.
I think, too, in the West Woods, I think the parking is on the west side, which, if the proposed is that it be the east lane, that you'd have to cross over the pedestrian lane to get to park your car, and I presume that you would either try to, maybe if that parking lot is stable, to make that part of the road and turn part of the road into the parking.
Right.
So, the parking would be on the same side.
Right. I think when we visited Washington Park in Springfield, we saw good examples of how they found smaller sections of what I call new parking that fit the new road scheme, and it wasn't a really huge impact, you know, on the overall park. Just to mention back to the master plan, if you recall, JGR promoted the idea of, you know, basically flip-flopping the roads and the trails, move the trails next to the lake, which we're trying to do, and also relocate the road. Well, as staff began to analyze that, you know, a year or so into it, we realized that would be a very costly proposition, so we really doubled down and thought, how can we create trail networks that take advantage of the lake or the water or desirable places but keep that road more or less in the same place? Continued observation led us to, hey, what have other park districts done with older historic parks? They often come up with this, you know, different one-way road system, so we definitely think it's worth exploring and investigating and seeing what it would take to do that.
Have we talked to the people at Washington Park and...
We visited.
How long has that been like that?
Several years, I don't know if we know exactly what year, we can find out.
But it wasn't, it wasn't original?
No, no, it was very much like Crystal Lake, in fact, that's what drew us to that, it's, it looks a lot like Crystal Lake Park, they've got a large lake, and it's got that big oak sort of hilly, you know, impression there. I think they love it. What they found there is they're actually restricting car access more days of the week because walking and biking is so popular, and people support that, you know, they understand it's a place to recreate and have fun, and, you know, I think if it's done right, it works better, and I think that's a better outcome. Certainly, we'll have a lot of opportunities for input and have to look at things, you know, how do people's patterns, where are our facilities, how do we address that, but I think this analysis will give us all that information.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to talk to them to see what kind of difficulties they had, because I think people are people are people, and even if it's Springfield.
I mean, you know, there's definitely education, new ways to, you know, develop signage, how do you do road pavings, have to look at it from a recreational standpoint, if we're having events or races, does that all work well, is everyone happy and fit?
Yeah, and is there a decent sidewalk on the other, on the overflow parking side on the...
There is a sidewalk, but I think we're trying to work with the city in figuring out that part of Broadway.
In terms of crossing, because that's already a disaster with Jimmy John's at lunch and other peak times.
Right.
Cities are working with Craig right now on a proposed crosswalk to get across. You know, in that Washington Park example, that, I think Tim alluded, but they do have examples where you cross over the bike head lane to get to a parking spot and then back out. We were there while it was happening, and it seemed to work okay.
Right.
At Cherokee Park, which is in Louisville, one of the Olmsted Parks, very similar, same condition, and it works, that one is also very intensely used, and that one that's interesting is that the bicyclists will sort of self-select whether they are with pedestrians or with the cars, because they're really experienced and vicious cyclists that want to go faster with the cars, and then there's the kids are in the other lane. In Washington, they're encouraging the bikes to stay with the cars and pedestrians separate, but we're also seeing families with kids that are with pedestrians, so all stuff we want to look at closely.
Yeah, yeah.
The current trail re, I'm sorry, lake rehab plan, an access plan, does reflect some additional parking at the lake house on the east lot, which is the one that always tends to fill up, people prefer to go there, and we've already identified that, some of the planning we're doing with, with Fairgram, so that won't be enough, but it, but it's something, we want to look at that as we move forward. We anticipate that some of the parking along the road near the playground would likely go away, and what do we do to make up for that, that'll be part of what we'll need to work at as well, so lots of great questions.
The other thing that you find often with road diet type implementations is that there's a visual perception of narrowing of the road, which actually makes the cars move slower, which I think in this setting is a good thing. You still want to have the lane wide enough to, to be safe, but once, for instance, once you put bike lanes on a street and cars don't have that feeling of a 15-foot wide lane, they tend to slow down, so I think that'll help.
I think another example we saw recently in St. Louis at NRPA, Tower Grove Park has a one-way road system, and I think we have to understand, early parks in America weren't designed for the auto, they were probably carriage roads or walking or even other types of early bicycles, so they weren't set up for all car-action parking and all that, so we're actually kind of moving back to some of those original ideas where there were fewer cars, more pedestrians, maybe horses or other transportation modes, whether it's unicycles, skateboards, or, you know, what people use today, rollerblades, what have you.
Would we think to close the car lane?
At times.
In the weekends? No, so not, because that's what, I mean, that's what they do in Washington Park.
They do it at times, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, every weekend it's closed.
Yeah, they just put up barricades at least when we were there, and, you know, or other gates, you know, are popped up, so obviously, we'll have lots of questions, and this report really helps, you know, give us a chance to analyze it. We might even, you know, find lots of new information or find out we, it's not advised, so I think we're going into it open, you know, in a learning process.
You know, Roland's comment about calming traffic, I, I find myself at times going a little faster than I, than I should in certain sections of the park, you know, it grows a little more wide, there's less activity.
Low-volume traffic, right.
I think this will be a good thing, and it's consistent with a lot of the, the safe community movements that are going on elsewhere.
Sure, yeah, I agree with that, I know both, I've driven in Washington and Tower Grove, and you just slow down because somehow you know there's one lane and there's other non-cars there, too, so it does, it does affect you.
Now, what, what are we thinking about doing of the path that's on the west side down by the fairground, because there's...
It's in pretty poor repair, it's not ADA accessible.
Right.
It would likely get replaced by, you know, it's improved.
So, we would keep it as, as it is, I mean, it...
Keep the path.
Keep the path where it is, I guess is what I'm asking.
Improve it, or not?
Well, all up for analysis and discussion, but I, I think we're anticipating it might eventually go away. You're talking about the asphalt path.
Along the fence.
The one that nearly goes through the trees.
Goes through the trees, with the boardwalk over top, yeah, and to my knowledge, that was here when I came, and I don't believe we've ever done major repair or redo of that trail, so probably now is a good time to think about any upgrades or where we need connections, you know, because they're probably all in need of some state of care or need.
I think some of that asphalt you can recycle.
Correct.
Heat it up and put it someplace else.
Right.
To fill all the holes in the road.
Another comment I'd point out about, and then we'll let Roland get back to his report, but if you remember in that plan that's on the wall for Crystal Lake, I think there was a proposal by the pool to swing the road actually up on that west side of the pool to take advantage of that, and obviously, after some reflection, and we hadn't really developed the pool scheme at that time, it was determined that, no, it's probably better to have a path.
Oh, okay, so that's, that's out of the...
To keep the road system, so that, that's an example, but you could essentially get that same other benefit if you had an upgraded trail that brought you closer to the saline for overlooks and took you up to the nature center, so the connectivity and the points of contact are still possible, it's just maybe done in a different way. I think it's fair to say, if we follow through and actually construct this, it would be better than it is today, so obviously, we wouldn't want to make it worse.
I guess, we always go on like this, I mean, this is, yeah, it's not, it's not you, it's just, we tend to wander.
It's great to see a very experienced, dedicated board at work. I would just close with, road diets are typically striping and signage focused, and if, for some reason, after you implement it, it's not working the way that you intended it to, there's always an option to change the signage and go back to the original function, it's not, it's not like we're physically narrowing the road down to 10 feet, so that's always good to keep in mind as you, as you, I don't anticipate that to be that way, but it's, it's good to have in your back pocket.
Or to tweak it to make it better.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you just, road diets, that's the term you've been using, what, what goes into the road diet?
So, yeah, I always hesitate whether to use that term or not, because people are like, diet, ah! I think the, this is being done on the Amcor project, which I got an opportunity to work on when I was at the university, but you would take a three or four-lane road and turn it into a two or three-lane road, and... and repurpose the existing roadway with bike and/or wider sidewalks and squeeze that vehicular traffic area down, um, which slows the traffic. And in some cases, you, you want traffic to go somewhere else. Um, you don't necessarily want it going down Green Street. So you want to make room for buses and, and cars and bicycles and, and people, pedestrians. And so that's, that's what a road diet is.
The diet is the squeezing of sort of the...
So in a sense, this, this is part of, it's, it's a type of a road diet.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. So, I move, we award services for the Crystal Lake Park One Way Traffic Circulation Evaluation in the amount of thirty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and a ten percent contingency of three thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars to Fairgram Engineering of Champaign, Illinois.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out this evening. Okay, that brings us to our consent agenda for the evening. The items on the consent agenda for this meeting are approval of the minutes from the January nine, two thousand and eighteen regular board meeting, uh, the receipt of our three monthly reports from the various departments, action to accept the philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude, and approval of the monthly paid accounts payable. Again, it is the purview of any single commissioner to remove any of these items from the consent agenda for separate, uh, discussion and action. Is there any commissioner wanting to remove anything from tonight's consent agenda? Seeing no such indication, is there a motion that we approve the items on the consent agenda in an omnibus fashion?
So moved.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded and under our rules, there's to be no further discussion on the consent agenda. Uh, let's do a roll call vote with this, starting with Bob.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting in the affirmative. So that moves us on to our financial reports.
Hello, everyone. I'll be discussing tonight the performance of the park district for the month of January twenty eighteen. So we're nine months into our fiscal year now, so we're kind of dwindling down. We've gotten through all of our busiest times. Now we get to see the rest of the fiscal year through. So the first report I'll be discussing is the fund balance report. And this is a report that shows the receipts and expenditures for the prior twelve months, the budget for the current period, and the preliminary unaudited results for the nine months ending January thirty-first. The first page of the report, we call SOME I. This is all funds except for the capital improvements fund. Revenues for this period were eight million, two hundred and forty-one thousand, which is an increase of one million, eighty-eight thousand since December. Six million, six thirty-one is, uh, were revenues from property taxes and we've received all of our property taxes for this fiscal year. Expenditures were six million, eight hundred and forty-three thousand, which is a change of three hundred and ninety-eight thousand since December. And we have a surplus after nine months, which means there's an excess of revenues over expenditures paid of one million, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. And a net change in fund balance shows an increase in fund balance after nine months of one million, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand. SOME II is the second page of this report. This report shows only the activity of the capital improvements fund. Revenues for this nine-month period were one hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars and expenditures were five hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Expenditures exceed revenues, which means there was a deficit of three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Bond proceeds of seven hundred and ten thousand were received in December for a total of other sources of, of seven hundred and ten thousand dollars at this time. This leaves a net increase in fund balance in the capital improvements fund of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, which will be continued to spend, which we will continue to spend down as the fiscal year continues and, and winds down. We're budgeting a decrease in fund balance in the capital improvements fund of three hundred and ninety-six five. We'll see if we get there. I don't know if we have quite that much spending to do, but it just depends on project schedules. And finally, on page three, this is both of the first two pages added together. This is a summary of the entire district. And I like to note that if the district were to end today, we have fund balances of eight million, one hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars at this time. Following that are the summary reports for the three individual, or the four individual working funds, general recreation museum and indoor pool. Does anyone have any questions about the fund balance report? Then I'll talk next about the budget analysis with history report. This report shows a historical comparison of the same nine-month period for the current year and the prior three years. So we're at seventy-five percent of the fiscal year, so you can use that number throughout this report. Um, the first section, page one and the, uh, I'm sorry, the first three pages of this report is all funds district-wide. So it's all of our funds added together. And total revenues on page two in the middle. The summary of total revenues is, uh, both revenues and transfers in for this nine-month period was eleven million, five hundred thousand dollars and we've received, as you can see, over ninety-nine percent of our property taxes. Uh, you can also see on, uh, the bottom of page two and the beginning of page three that our expenditures are running ratably consistent with prior three years. And in fact, as I've noted previously, the majority of our expenditures are running better than the prior three years. I haven't exactly figured that one out, other than just general efficiencies that, that we've discovered, especially with the pool operation. Um, I know that staff at that particular operation, we didn't have quite as many. We only issued four hundred W twos this year. We issued four twenty-five last year. So I think we've realized some efficiencies in that particular operation. So that's my best guess for why we've, why we're experiencing, um, better year, a better year than the prior three. On the bottom of page three, you can see our total expenditures and transfers out for this period were nine million, seven hundred and forty-four thousand, with a surplus at the end of Janu- January of one million, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand. And if you don't have any questions about that report, I'm happy to entertain any questions. I'll move on to the treasurer's report. The treasurer's report is a report of the amount of cash that, that the district has on one day, January thirty-first, twenty eighteen. All twenty-four funds are listed with where our cash is invested for a grand total of nine million, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. Page two of this report, first section at the top lists our, uh, investments that the district holds in interest-bearing accounts. So of the nine million, nine thirty-nine thousand on hand, eight million, nine twenty-three is invested. I continue to reinvest CDs as they mature. Dottie set up, uh, laddered CDs with Commerce Bank before she left and, um, they're, they mature at not, three, six, nine months, and then she had four, and twelve months, and then she had four thirty-month CDs. And as those have matured, I, I just evaluate our liquidity, make sure I, we don't need it, and then I reinvest them, which I continuously have. And, um, every time I've reinvested, it's been more since Dottie left. The interest rates have gone up, which is great for CDs and, and, but not so good for when we issue our bonds because then we get higher interest rates too. So you see it both ways. But, um, you know, our interest returns have been really pretty decent compared to what we were budgeting when I first started.
Yes, indeed.
I think they were negative numbers.
That's great. But you can see on the Commerce Bank CDs, the rate for, um, I have a rate of two-point-three now on one of our, or on several of our CDs. And the rate, um, that was there before, the highest rate we had was one-point-five. So, I mean, it's really increased lately, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's good. And most of our CDs pay either at maturity or semi-annually. So sometimes, um, you won't see our interest revenues increase until the money is actually received, just throughout the year, the fiscal year. And so sometimes you'll be like, oh, the interest doesn't look super high, but it's because we recognize it just as we receive it instead of, um, on an accrual basis, which we do at the end of our fiscal year. We have to accrue anything that we would have earned that we haven't actually gotten yet in cash. But, um, most of our CDs mature at the end of the fiscal year, so you won't see our interest really hike up till the very end.
Uh-huh.
So. All right. Um, moving on to the next section is interfund loans. Nothing's changed since last period. We just have the standard loan between the general fund and the payroll and interim checks funds. And lastly, you can see that total dispersments of funds for vendor payments in the month of January was three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, which is consistent with the payments that were made, um, in the reports that you received along with the consent agenda. And unless you have any further questions, I present the treasurer's report to you for approval.
Move that we accept the treasurer's report for audit.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the point? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously.
I'll touch briefly on the supplemental report of cash. This report is the same information as the first page of the treasurer's report, but it groups the information by expected use rather than by fund name. Daily operating funds, restricted special needs, and restricted gifts and donations are the three categories that we break the funds into. And you can see at the bottom line of this report, the bolded line under grand total, that the nine million, nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars that we have available, one million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand is restricted, leaving eight million, six hundred and seventy-one available for spending. And finally, I'll touch on the activity that was in the capital budgets for this month. Not a whole lot to discuss, but, um, this is the first time that you're receiving the twenty eighteen capital budget. And you can see there were three areas of activity. We received the bond proceeds, which were, which was actually in December, but I went ahead and highlighted it since it's the first time you're seeing this. Um, and then we also paid our cost of issuance fees and we paid a payment for the design of the King Park basketball court under our Hardscapes line. On the next page, under twenty seventeen, expenditures occurred on tributes, hazard tree work, uh, the sediment basin project, and seed was purchased for restoration of the bankard site, uh, which was down in the contingency section. Did you have a question, Nancy?
That's just a lot of seed.
It says, well, that's the total project. That was the asbestos removal, demolition, and seeding. And it's all adding up to a total of thirty-two. The seed was like less than five hundred dollars.
We could just carpet it with that much seed.
Right. Grow over it.
Yeah. Thank you. That was a good question.
It comes up.
The majority of that thirty-two thousand was the demo, so.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And finally, in the twenty sixteen capital budget, this month expenditures occurred on the sediment basin project. And now Andy and Derek have some updates for you on capital projects.
Um, I'm going to start with the familiar topic I think I've updated every month, which is the saline creek, rock ripple, um, shoreline stabilization. And, uh, similarly to previous months, we've been notified there's more delays. IDNR actually had a position terminated that was in charge of procurement for our project. So our project manager, um, with IDNR is kind of taking over that aspect and is obviously very behind at the moment. Um, we've been notified that if agreements aren't in place by the end of February, it's likely not to happen until the fall. But the good news with that is, is before we were unsure if the heavy equipment crew would be available in the fall, but we did get confirmation that, um, they would be able to schedule us in.
I actually think it might be better. Um, their, their construction schedule is getting pretty tight. They have some limitations for when they can remove trees because of potential for bat habitat. Uh, and so this will get them a wider window to do their work, uh, better water conditions to work within. So I, I, I think that it was getting pretty tight. It also gives the university a little bit more time to perform some additional 3D modeling that they've been wanting to do.
Uh-huh.
They, they knew all along that the project might advance before they complete the modeling, but now they've got a little bit more opportunity to do so.
Um, the UIAC air handling replacement. We, um, we, as in the park district staff and school district, interviewed, uh, two firms for the design work. And, uh, we've made a selection with Heniman Engineering. We have a contract in place. Um, we actually had our kickoff meeting this morning. I just wanted to note that, again, it's a very tight schedule. We need to try to fit in all of the work, the, the install work in the UIAC closure period, which is, um, July twenty-first to August tenth. Heniman has proposed a schedule which we're planning on moving ahead with that would actually separate, um, the bid for the fabrication of the unit, which would need board approval that we're currently targeting as the April study session, and then have a separate bid and award that would probably be in May, um, for the actual installation of the unit. So, um, I did want to report that they're including VFD in the design, um, the variable frequency drives. They're still working through some of those on-demand, um, whether it's CO2 or chloramines, which or both could be used in the system. We don't have any firm information on that at this time, but probably in the next few weeks, uh, we'll be evaluating their options with our budget and seeing what can work in the facility.
The, the fabrication of the unit, the, the actual pool pack unit or other different manufacturer, that, that's got a long lead time. And so by bidding that independently in advance, uh, we can get that in, in the cycle. And what we learned today is that, um, we would issue a PO, um, but then in the bid spec for the installation, it would include that the installing contractor takes possession of that PO. And so they actually would, would technically purchase and obtain the equipment and the warranty for the equipment would go along with the installation, which is very important. So I had reservations until I heard that and...
Yeah, yeah.
We're really just getting our place in the queue. And then it goes back on to whoever would be selected for that installation.
It's hard to believe, you know, here we are in, in February and we're talking about a tight construction window for something that's going to happen in late summer, but it's, it's because of that long fabrication time.
Yeah.
It shows why this is so important because if the unit were to go down, we'd be without a pool for a period of time, as we learned during the fire.
Mm-hmm.
That would not be good.
Uh, the King Park Court project, um, that's maintaining the tennis court on the western side. Bank shot basketball and a half-court basketball. That bid's currently open. Um, we have a bid opening scheduled next Thursday, so the award is planned for the March board meeting that you'll be seeing in the packet. Um, the project schedule currently has that work set to be completed by May twenty-fourth. Uh, last thing I wanted to touch on was the APNC Habitat Garden. So there's currently a, a water feature that's viewable from the observation room at the nature center. This is a small project, but it's coming up in the very near future. Um, I think it's been done a couple, redone a couple of times in the past, two or three, I believe. It's never functioned optimally, to my understanding, so. Um, we're working with Chris's Water Gardens and it'll be kind of a combination of UPD staff, our construction crew, Keith. And, uh, we'll actually redo the landscaping surrounding the water feature itself. So it's basically just a, there's stones and boulders and some ledges and, um, gentle splashing, shallow pooling. The idea is to draw the, the birds out of UC woods and have them be, you know, viewable from our observation room, so. And like I said, there'll be a whole new planting plan surrounding that, which will have native species and, um, hopefully drawing pollinators, so.
Past designs, we, we tried to go with much more passive system, uh, and, uh, ultimately things didn't work. You know, the, the liner or a log would eventually succumb to, to time. Um, before that was a concrete basin that...
The tongue.
Yeah, it, it technically worked. It just wasn't, wasn't very inspiring, so. We're really excited about this plan.
Good question, yeah. Obviously fountains in the Midwest are, I, I still think they're often high maintenance. Anytime, I think we have two pools, so we know how water, digging a hole and putting water in. Um, but I, I do think this is a much better product and a much better approach to what we're going to get there.
Yeah, and he's been in business a long, quite a while, so he'll have a lot of that.
I think the landscape re- really gives us an opportunity to sort of retell the story to... to pollinators and birds and habitat are much, you know, not more of interest, but we're seeing a big resurgence and a focus, particularly with the pollinators. So it's a good thing. It's good for us and our message, so we welcome it.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
That's it for me, unless there's any questions.
No questions? All righty, thanks very much.
Yep.
Thanks, Andy.
Move on to the executive director's report.
Great. I think I sent out some post-event information from the Korn Cross, the Cycle Cross event. Hopefully, you got to see those images. Great event, everyone had a great time. I've never seen the parks used like that before, so they're relatively passive areas that were used in a very different way and had a great time. I think it was a great crowd, and we look forward to adding this type of activity into our all-things bicycle-related. So we'll be doing our post-event wrap-up with the organizers and probably get some more ideas and follow-ups out of that. I'll come back to strategic plan. Just wanted to mention the ITAP kickoff project, I think it was probably reported in a few reports. I just wanted to mention Fairgram did an excellent job of setting that up, leading it. We actually met over at the Carl facilities to accommodate their staff, so had a large turnout, a lot of good general information. I don't think there are, you know, very few concerns or questions going into it, but it gives everybody that is a sort of stakeholder in that area a chance to come out, MTD, Carl, us, city, others, so looking forward to that. Just want to mention a few other things. Just, we do want to schedule a time with the policy study group to get back on track with our, just our policy review. I think we also want to have a little further discussion on the sexual harassment policy we approved last month. I think you got notice that the IAPD Legislative Breakfast is scheduled for March 12th at the Virginia Theater. Kelsey will be following up with each of you to check on who's able to attend, and so we can get our RSVP. Had an excellent conference, conference wrap-up, something we've been doing for the last several years, is after our annual conference, bring all the attendees together. Nancy was able to join us and really kind of go through all of our sessions, talk about what we thought was worthwhile. It's a great opportunity for people that maybe one, I wanted to go to that, but I couldn't make it because I was in another session, so it's a good way to get a debrief. So I think, you know, we squeeze every bit of good information out of our conference experience. I think our staff, obviously, we have to attend for professional reasons, for CEU reasons, but obviously, it's a great time to learn. I bet there's at least a dozen new ideas that we would like to implement and follow up with, so.
We talked for three, more than three hours.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. There were, there were good, there were good sessions, and there was, there was a lot to be, a lot to be shared.
Yep. I think as good news, very few not-so-great sessions. I think everyone had positive thoughts. So again, as we look at where we invest in staff education, staff development, I think that's definitely an important factor. Just want to mention the age-friendly process as far as our Center for Health Aging and Disability continues. We're putting together an action plan, so the committee is working real hard now to really set us up for both receiving age-friendly community awards, but also, more importantly, hopefully, we'll be eligible for some grant projects that might lend itself to some improvements in that area, so excited about that. I think from, I'm working with Joe DeLuce on our parks and public facilities. We've identified really three key issues. There are a lot of issues, but obviously, to get this year's action plan put together, we're really trying to focus on connectivity, accessibility, and health and wellness, which really mirror both of our districts' own interests and own needs at this time. So it's kind of uncanny that this larger, community-wide group also identifies with that. Very excited about the changes coming to the Phillips Rec Center. We've done some awesome indoor projects. We're going to work on the kitchen and move on the outside with the siding, and there's some new landscape elements. We're talking ahead down the road for the proposed new playground upgrade, so I think we're going to really see a really fine site emerge. We've enjoyed it, it's been beautiful and wonderful, but as we know, you know, the building's 20 years plus, so it's about time to be thinking about those things. Continue to work at Binker Grove, meeting with JP Gogan and David Hayes, colleague in landscape architecture, to try to enlist the university in some way, it could be a student that might help us develop a site plan or work with us, or a class project, perhaps. There's not a real pressure to move ahead with that, but we're getting very excited about what could happen at that site. Updates on the KRT. We'll be sharing the transportation analysis, the one that RPC did for us at the March study session, so we'll get a little more information. But essentially, there's about 10 alternatives that have emerged from that study. There's a whole, you know, separate process of meetings and public input for that, but we'll come back with that. And we're continuing to talk about the, we don't have a real working title, but the extended downtown section of the KRT. Was able to do a presentation with the Champaign County First Group. I think there is a real level of excitement, interest, and joint opportunity. I think Champaign Park District and the City of Champaign are very interested. We'll be calling a meeting to continue to discuss that, that idea of could this potentially be a long-term Greenway project that would really transform our downtowns and overall community? Obviously, those, key word is long-term, because it takes a lot to study and get things in place, but if we don't start now, we won't realize those benefits until down the road. I think Corky mentioned last month, the Century 21 grants got extended, it was awesome news. We were able to sign those documents today to get that moving. But I did note in some of the current administration's budget proposal, I think there were 22 major cuts, and that is one of the cuts, so I'd recommend we track that, whether those go forward and end up that way. We take it very seriously, where any area that we're involved with is sort of put on the spotlight. It's time for us to pay attention and really advocate for that. Obviously, I think from our perspective, if we didn't have that grant, we would find it very difficult to provide that level of service and/or find the resource, you know, to shift over. So it's very critical for us to track that. Leave strategic plan for last. I think the April study session, want to start talking about goals for the 2018, 2019 budget year, so we have that in the works. We also, I think we started talking about it last month, about the ADA current plan we have. I think staff's recommending that it be a good idea for us to work with Champaign Park District and have both districts jointly hire a group, update our plans. Obviously, we could use the resources through special rec funds like we did previously to pay for that, so that'll be something we'll probably want to get a study group together and start analyzing that, and likely be a good goal for next year. Couple of local club updates. The Urbana Rotary has been doing some fundraising to help replace trees for the city of Urbana. There's been a significant loss of trees, obviously Emerald Ash Bore, other tree diseases, oak diseases, and some tough weather summers we've had with some drought that have affected. So the city is very grateful. I think the Rotary Club is raising $5,000, and there's a local resident willing to match that, so there'll be about $10,000. As a part of that, a few of the trees will be planted in Crestview. I think the club still has a real strong affinity with that park, and just wanted to have a club activity, so thanks to Derek and Rich McMahon, they'll help set us up, and we'll probably in, end of April, probably near Arbor Day, have an event there. Also, wanted to mention that we're working with Ambox Club. If you recall, they did receive the Stevic Grant to allow some improvements at Ambox, primarily the shelter roofs and other smaller improvements, so we'll be meeting with that group to try to gear up for that, that project. And it's always fun and worthwhile to engage in our local clubs. And then lastly, just wanted to mention, staff's going to be really beginning the preliminary stages for the strategic plan. Couple of ideas we have, if it works out, I think probably later in mid-March, maybe early April, we'd like to have what we call a board-staff retreat, basically just a meeting, but get together and really go over the history of what the previous plan was, what it included, sort of our hopes and dreams, or things that came out or didn't come out of that. Do some visioning, thinking about the future, and probably learning about some maybe other groups' plans or approaches, what's been done, what good information is out there. We also, Derek and I, thought it'd be really hopeful to really set up interviews with each commissioner, too, and do a little interview in-depth, one-on-one, or us with you, to really sort of pick your brains and sort of kind of get your backgrounds and what you'd hope to see out of that. Obviously, we see a role for UPDEC when Roger was talking about UPDEC's involvement. We think that's a terrific plan, obviously laying the groundwork now for benefits and outcomes that will come later. So if we keep that up, every UPDEC group kind of keeps things moving for us, so we're very pleased about that. I think for the first meeting, we'll probably work with Jared Shuneman. He's done a lot of work in, all over the state in various levels of planning, but just to sort of bring his viewpoint or his expertise, what he knows, what he's been researching and seeing in other districts throughout the state. So we'll be contacting you to try to set up a time. I can answer any other questions, if you have any, though.
Okay, thanks, Tim. Moving on to the president's report. We have both a study session and a regular board meeting next month. In the notes here, we're seeing strategic plan as the topic of the March 6th, but I think that's...
I think we've had some changes on that.
Right. But you were mentioning, you thought some of the KRT information would be available at that time, and perhaps...
Probably pull in some of our trailhead...
Some other things there.
Schemes, too.
And then for the regular board meeting, we're likely to receive a wage salary and merit recommendations from the administrative team, not, and probably an executive session that evening to at least review that before we deal with it in April. Moving on to the liaison reports, the finance committee, actually, the board here has now met twice since we last had our finance study group, so I think we've covered pretty much all that was in that one. Believe the next study group meeting is the first Friday in March, if I'm not mistaken.
[inaudible].
Anything from the policy study group?
No, we have not met.
But...
We're working on...
But coming up soon, yeah.
Yeah.
And Parks Foundation representative, Lashonda, have you...
I didn't attend yesterday's meeting because they had NAPIT at the school district, so I was with my kids, but from reading the report, the minutes from last meeting, and we discussed it in our study session, potential projects that the foundation, having that partnership to get going on some of those projects, so they have an interest with working with the staff.
And moving on to the UPDEC planning study group, that has not met at this point.
We're planned up.
Planned up?
Yep.
Okay. All righty. Moving on down the agenda, there was no old business removed from the consent agenda, so there's nothing to deal with there. So we're now to under new business, action to approve Resolution 2018-01 to include cash payments related to health insurance as IMRF earnings.
Thank you. Recall it, February board study session, we reviewed both of these proposed resolutions, both in A and B. Answered all the questions. I think that is the staff recommendation to approve the resolution, but we can answer any additional questions if you had any.
Do you have any more thoughts about this?
Well, I think it is a reasonable thing to do myself.
Yeah, I just was...
No, I...
Curious. Just checking.
Yeah, well, my thought of it is I am for it.
Okay. All right, then, shall I make a motion?
Please do.
I move approval of Resolution 2018-01, including cash payments related to health insurance as IMRF earnings.
Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Let's do a roll call vote on this, starting at the left with Lashonda.
Aye.
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 Okay, and that carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting. And that takes us to the parallel resolution 2018-02 to include compensation paid under an Internal Revenue Code Section 125 Plan as IMRF earnings, and that's the people's money that comes out pre-tax to go into various kinds of savings accounts.
I have one comment on that. Oh, sorry, Tim.
Go ahead.
I didn't mean to interrupt. I just wanted to make sure that it was very clear to the board. It says in the annotated text that with this, the passing of this resolution, the board would allow an employee's full base salary to be reported to IMRF, but I wanted to make it clear that as of May 1st, because we dated this back so that we have ample time to communicate with employees.
And these are, these are all year, we could, if we decided this was the worst idea in the world, we can change it next year, right?
Yes, we did contact IMRF, and we, the board has the ability to enact and retract these resolutions at its will, so you are able to change your mind at any time.
But it would, it would be an effect for a year, right?
It, no, it would be...
Oh, really?
Until the day you say.
Until another resolution would replace it.
So it's the next, it's the next board meeting, we're going to say, oh, that was really dumb, okay.
You can retract it one month, and, I mean, they would obviously not hope you would do that, but...
Yeah, right, right. Okay, I just thought it was, I was just...
If there was need to, or...
I was just checking, so it's not even on an annual basis that it comes up for review?
Yeah, and the thing I was concerned about is, because sometimes IMRF is like this, that if it, if it's retracted, that it's retracted forever.
Yeah.
And that you would have to go back and make adjustments to every single time it was included when it shouldn't have been, and they said, no, it's just as of the day you retract it, so...
Do we have this in writing?
This is what an IMRF representative and the IMRF attorney told us, so it is the best we can do.
Okay. Was there any blood in the signature?
So that's what we can do, but...
That's good, okay.
It gave me assurance that I think we're...
Yeah, so there was no waffling, so you feel comfortable with it?
Yeah, I feel comfortable.
I was just going to add, if there is a motion, it might be good I did have a roll call on that one also. Make a note to make sure we, those financial matters.
So I move to approve Resolution 2018-02, including compensation paid under an Internal Revenue Code Section 125 Plan as IMRF earnings.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions? Again, we should do a roll call vote, we'll start to the right with Bob.
Aye.
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 Okay, and that, again, carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting.
I know it.
Next item is action to award the annual bid for program guide printing services.
Corky's here to update.
That's moved today. Fallon, actually, Dana actually put the bid packet together before she moved to a new position, and then Fallon and I opened the bids. We ended up with two companies. One was Woodward Printing Services out of Platteville, Wisconsin, and Indiana Printing and Publishing out of Indiana, Pennsylvania, who actually is the company that does our program guides now. They won the bid last year. We were basically notified from other districts that have done bids lately that color printing, full color printing has come back very reasonable. So we did that as an alternate. And so last year, our do not exceed amount for leisure guides, which was 68 pages, and 168-page and 272-page guides was a do not exceed of 30,000, and we are recommending this, and that was not full color throughout the guide. It was a full color front and a color on the pages, but not full color.
Spot color.
So this year, the bids came in, and we are recommending, we're actually doing two, we're printing 172 and then 280-page guides. We're adding some more information this year as we continue to strive to offer to underrepresented groups. We're doing more from a guide standpoint. So we're adding more pages, and we're recommending that we approve Indiana Printing and Publishing out of Indiana, Pennsylvania for, but do not exceed a 32,000 this year, so. out of Indiana, Pennsylvania, but do not exceed a 32,000 this year.
So can... This is for the entire year, so it's two separate guides? Is that...
Three.
You're right.
So it's three guides.
One at 10,000 and two at 9,000, or the other way around?
Other way around.
Two at 10 and one at 9,000. Nine plus and 10 plus.
And this will...
And we're going with the color?
Full color.
That means you're not going to have that newspaper quality paper?
The quality of paper is similar, but it will not look like a newspaper.
This is a positive thing in my outlook, in my opinion.
It will not look like a newspaper.
Okay.
All right. I move that we award the bid for printing for the 2018-19 Seasonal Program Guides to Indiana Printing and Publishing for 280-page print runs and 172-page print run with a total price not to exceed $32,000.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously. And next up is action on award of a contract for Phillips Recreation Center Remodeling Design Services.
Andy's got a proposal for us tonight. Obviously, I mentioned we're excited about the improvements, and staff can tell us more.
Yep. Tim noted in his report, a lot of the upcoming items that may be taking place at the site there in the facility. There's been a number of recent remodeling projects there that include the sport court flooring and the Blair Liel and Carl rooms, the repainting, new signage, new blinds. There's still space on the interior that, you know, we feel could be reworked, redesigned to achieve better utilization for our programs and rentals. And specifically, finding more space for CUSR in our facility in Urbana. So we worked with IGW in the last year, and staff has taken a number of tours to area, teaching kitchens, classrooms. And, you know, I think what we've gathered is that this space would be better utilized to open up the kitchen and the James Room and have it be that usable classroom space that could be swapped in and out for our programs and CUSR programs. So what you'll see in the proposal here is that redesign of those two rooms into one. There's also some additional work for the siding. The current siding is original wood siding. It's had a number of locations with fading and water damage. And so what's proposed is to provide new siding for the facility. That would be the cement board siding, which I believe at the lake house is called Hardy Board.
Pool and Nature Center.
And the pool and nature center.
Nature Center's a little different. Yeah, it's different.
So IGW's included their proposal siding work along with the James Room and Kitchen and to provide design documents for a future UPD install of a pergola that would be located on the southern patio off of the James Room. Currently, what we have set for a schedule is to do the siding work this spring, come back in after camp, and complete the James Room and Kitchen fall/winter. And then, in all likelihood, either coincide the pergola with that project or immediately following, which would be done in-house by Keith, our construction crew supervisor. What's also included in the project, but not part of this proposal, is redoing the landscaping around the facility. So there's money set aside in 2018 capital budget. This is a similar idea of what was done with the cottage during its recent project where we did an in-house landscape revitalization, I guess, around the facility. So we're looking to do that similar type thing tied in with this.
This sort of reminds me of the Nature Center. You may remember there's a series of capital projects at the Nature Center. We're now doing Phillips, and this isn't the end. We'll be back next year. We'll start working on the playground and some additional work there. But we're really excited. We recently had the ribbon cutting, you know, for the mural that was done. And I was just so embarrassed looking at the siding and seeing the rusty nails that were poking through the stained siding and just so excited that we're doing this project. And of course, the James Room is going to be fantastic. CU Special Rec has reviewed plans with us, and they're enthusiastic. It's going to be really transformative.
And that's something we, you know, we plan to continue to keep CUSR in this process as well, to review all the design work that'll go into this and eventually get bid out.
I was just going to add, Corky and I had a great opportunity to meet with Phil Knox a few weeks ago, just to show him the improvements inside and also talk about these additional improvements. I think it's a good lesson we learn is, you know, make that extra effort to go back to your donors, to keep them involved. He was a major donor for the project. He was very pleased, and I could tell that, you know, you could tell that it met the approval of it's a good investment and we're doing the right thing. It's not always the case. A lot of times, donor projects fall into disrepair and, you know, aren't kept up. So I think that's a good history lesson that we've always followed is, you know, try to keep in good contact and good graces with donors.
And what about the north patio?
There's potential for the future to expand the James Room, and that would utilize that north patio space. That's currently not in this proposal. It was just another option that we were given. But we could definitely see down the road, and we keep, you know, as Derek said, adding capital projects on to these facilities, expanding that James Room out. Hopefully, it's a thing where there's demand so high that it's going to push that need a little sooner, but...
Has the horse been part of the discussion?
We do have a new sculpture plan in the works to relocate what's there currently, see if it can be restored. But more than likely puts something else in that maybe it becomes a revolving site. It is our community center, and we think there's a lot of viewership along Springfield and Stoughton and that area. So I think it would make a nice addition to the new landscape. I think just if we're tracking, you know, the building was built and opened in 1995. So while it still, to me, seems like our new community center, obviously it's aged. Think what, Derek, this is the third. We've stained it three times, the original and two others. So again, we have tried to preserve that wood, but obviously with wood siding, that takes a lot of heat on that south. And the north side's sort of the opposite, a lot of moisture and shade. So it's sort of the worst of both. Let's hope the east and west sides are in decent shape still.
They're the short ends, though.
Right, they're the short ends, exactly. So...
So it was opened in 95?
Yeah.
Wow.
Right, so it's a...
I ought to put another 10 years on it at least.
Right, right.
My timeline is just...
Right. I experienced that, too. We just did, and then Derek and Andy remind me, well, it was actually done in... All right, let's do the math and see where we are.
Well, I move to award the contract for Phillips Recreation Center Remodeling Design Services an amount of $30,800 and a 10% contingency of $3,080 to IGW Architecture of Urbana, Illinois.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries unanimously. We've already dealt with the item E to do the faregram. And that brings us to F, the recreation statistics for last year.
Yeah. So I'm going to talk a little bit here at first on how this is derived, just probably a reminder to everybody. But every year after a program season, which is, we put that in based on the program guide. So there's three per year. Staff send out evaluations. From those evaluations, as a department, they look at what kind of responses they received or analyze how the program did, how it didn't do. And then they kind of put seasonal evals together. And so from that seasonal eval, Charles then takes all the seasonal evals, and who works at Phillips, and he puts it all together into a final report. Lots of good comments throughout here that if you haven't seen, which probably most of you have, take time to look at them. But it also is a good tool, looking back afterwards, to look at them. I won't go through every single comment, obviously. I actually had some of my managers put together some comments based on the first four charts, which is what I usually review with you guys. And since we're moving into the first chart, and we were just talking about Phillips, I wanted to touch on that improvement that we made last year with the fitness, the multipurpose rooms becoming sport court floor, the painting of the facility that makes it more inviting. You know, some of these numbers in the first chart, for example, are reflected by, while it's not a ton of difference, our rentals for Phillips have doubled. Now, that's pretty small based on it was $1,400, and now we've brought in $3,000 in rentals. But still, it's attracted more people to rent the facility. Elsie also reported on her end of things that we started three brand-new fitness classes in those rooms, and we've expanded to, for two additional days for senior strengtheners, which is really popular at the moment. And so, you know, having that space the way it is has allowed us to do some of those things and provide more offering. So that's just, you know, it's kind of neat to see this is what we think it can do, and it's starting to do that already in the first year, half a year from putting it in. So that's great. Also, while you're looking at that first chart, the community program numbers, I just did want to report that while we were doing the changes at Phillips, we also redid our counters. We have new counters, so when you walk in the building, that has accounted for some of our increase based on the last counters weren't working all the time. So I don't know...
You literally mean the clicking, not this?
Clicker. No, the counters, the people counters.
Thank you. Just double check.
So when they come in the door...
I'm envisioning new surfaces.
Yeah, people counters.
Because that's a huge jump.
The visit counters, when they come in, the front doors into the front vestibule. Before, they weren't always getting the people when they come in. So I would say some of that increase in number is definitely due to that. And from a community program, more kind of like the entire district side of things, the Worldwide Day of Play brought in a lot of people, participants this past season. And that is the event where we included the Welcoming America program as well. So that also did well. Going down in that...
Looks like you also had... Are the movie nights, were those new this year?
There's movie nights in various areas. Yes, the movie nights is probably more counted.
Is that not...
It would be encountered in the community programs. But we also added the playdays in the park that would address some of the numbers.
I mean, 54% increase is a pretty big increase.
Mm-hmm, right. Yeah. And Janet's other thing was we did a tap dance open house. Take a Child Outside Week, I'm sorry, was the same as the Welcoming America. Those two events went together. From an athletics standpoint, the one that you see that did decrease, I wanted to point that out. With that one, we had, in the past, we've done athletics and aquatics camp. And it's become a challenge over the years with doing aquatics with our facilities. If you've gone to the pool, and aquatics was at Crystal Lake Pool in the beginning, you walk in and they've got all their stuff kind of piled in the opening. So we decided last year that we would try doing just athletics again, meaning they still go to the pool like the rest of the camps, but it's not called Athletics and Aquatics Camp. So they don't utilize the pool as much, but they still go to the pool. That basically dropped our number from, it's a large camp, no matter how you look at it, but we went from having 48 to 55 per session to being more in the 40 to 48 range. So Kyle mentioned that it actually dropped total number throughout the 11 weeks, or is it 12 weeks?
12.
Sports is 12. We do one extra week in sports. It dropped, the number of kids total dropped 100 kids over those 12 weeks, 10 or so each one. So that was the main thing for the decrease in the athletics. Going down to the rentals, the revenue for the year was up. 2016, we brought in, well, I told you that, at Phillips, 1444 to 3,550. I think the main thing I want to say for rentals is athletics is still a very strong area. We do a lot of facilitating, whether it's the outside soccer fields or the gym or volleyball court in the gym. It's very consistent, and there's a huge demand for it. So that continues to go strong. Going to the programs offered and canceled, I kind of have my soapbox. I tell you, every year, I like to see that around the 10% mark. We're a little closer to that this year, where we decreased 10%. You know, 10% of them did not go. Again, if you look at the number of programs offered, we have 840 were offered this year compared to 750. Again, to me, that's what drives that cancellation rate. The more you offer, the more creative you're getting with your different programs, and they're not all going to work. And that's part of the balance between the programming and the budget and all those things is, you know, if you don't have enough participation, then making sure that we're being smart about how things are working out from the financial end of it as well. So I'm happy with the fact that we were almost 7% on the cancellation rate this year. Staff are doing a lot of exciting new things. I guess one kudo that I wanted to mention from environmental programs is that, and this is more programming, but I really wanted to mention it. Savannah and her preschool age programs has gone crazy this year. That number's, her number of participants has increased by 67%. We offer them a lot, but until this past year, it's been tough for us to carry the programs out just because not enough participation. So Savannah's done a fabulous job of doing that work. From a volunteer standpoint, one of the big things that we did there, Elsie had quite a few new volunteers, more volunteers for the, our 50th anniversary for the Turkey Trap. And that's the only note I got on volunteers. You know, that's driven by, when you talk about sports, how many teams do we have? Sometimes we have a volunteer that'll do more than one team based on, you know, when their kids are playing. So it's all driven by the numbers of participants in most of the programs. And a lot of the, you know, we have park cleanup days, and we also do the strawberry jam. You know, that depends on how many paid staff we're using versus how many volunteers are actually needed. And that is one of those events where... And that is one of those events where all hands are on deck from a full-time staff point. So. Are there any questions in particular that anyone has about the report?
Is on page, where is it now? Well, I guess in rentals, are we renting Brookins?
Yes.
So, on page thirteen, like we have, can you help me? It's not part of rental participation business. Is that because it's a different category or?
Yes, that's community programs. They go in sections.
Sorry.
Let me see where.
Okay, is it under just athletics? It's just athletics?
Athletics, yes.
But do we have anywhere where all of our rental facilities are summarized in one table? Or is it, it's by program, not by facility?
It's by program and then it just gives you a total on that front page in the front.
So athletically, there was seven and a half percent less rentals, which you brought in eleven percent more money for.
There was, there was eight and a half people that came to the rentals. The number of rentals may have been consistent.
The number of days. What page are you on? I'm sorry.
Page ten.
Page ten.
Second graph, Brookins Rentals, Brookins Revenue.
That's the number of people.
So, yeah, that's the number of visits.
Wait, the page?
Is it visits or it's the number of actual rentals?
That's the number of visits. Are you on the first chart?
No, second chart.
Oh, second chart.
Where it says Brookins Revenue, twenty-eight thousand.
The second chart is the number of rentals.
Oh, it is.
Yes.
It says visits on the front.
It's the number of rentals because the visits are on the top.
So, we had three hundred and seventy rentals, down by thirty rentals. But the revenue was still higher because you raised fees this year.
No, it could have been longer periods of time. I have to let Charles know that that must be present.
As we talk about it as an important facility that, and why I'm curious about it, always looking at it.
On the previous page, the middle chart, I mean, all those things are down pretty dramatically, including Splash. I mean, the Splash is off twenty percent. Just that many fewer participants.
This chart deals with Splash that athletics was involved in. So, it's not, it doesn't involve community programs. It doesn't involve nature programs or any fitness programs at Splash.
And the other thing I don't understand is how you can go from sixteen hundred to eight hundred and it's only minus twenty percent.
Yep.
Yeah, that should be fifty. And I also.
Where's that at, Michael?
The third graph.
Oh, got it.
Urbana Middle School.
The question on that could be, did he not bring all the numbers over too? So, I'll look at it and let you know. I had one thing on page fourteen to point out. When we talk about Splash, and I wanted to address, Meredith had a question, I think, earlier today as well about Splash. But, so Splash, the Urbana Early Childhood School was a program that the Park District has started. And it is, it is our largest Splash program that we have. We serve the most amount of kids through that early childhood program. So, that's been a huge success. Meredith, we just met with Linda Gibbons from the school and again from Updak Grace. What's her name?
From Updak?
Yeah, the Updak member who talked about the other grade schools.
Jamie.
Jamie Gleason. Had talked about the other grade schools, Thomas Payne, Yankee Ridge, and Wiley, that do not have Splash. And we actually have come, we've been able to get some funding. And so, we're actually going to do a pilot Splash yet hopefully before the year's over with. But Tim and Nikki has been working on some paperwork to apply for more Twenty-First Century Funds that will now take care of funding those three schools. So, now all the grade schools would have Splash. So.
What's the cycle of a Twenty-First Century grant? What's the life?
Is that three-year cycles or four?
Five. Original ones, five.
In that zone.
So, is the early childhood funded through a?
No, early childhood's funded through the Urbana Park District.
So, okay. So, we provide all that programming at no cost to that program?
No cost to the school.
School.
But it's our cost.
Right, right. Sorry. The program being early childhood school at no cost. Wow.
Community program budget absorbs it.
And that probably doesn't qualify for Twenty-First Century or?
It does not. I believe that, I believe it has to be a full-day school for one, and these are two half-days. Again, Linda's always the one who does all the grant writing for those. But I'm sure there's some reason why we're not getting funding for that or we would have been going for it.
Two quick comments too. I think part of the Updak members' concerning question was, is there any way we could help get kids more outside time while they're at school? Obviously, that's something we can't. But the after-school is definitely something we can help with. So, that's sort of our way to be able to help make that better. We're certainly happy to talk with the school district. I'm sure they're aware of it and have schedule and resource and.
Didn't you mention that that was something Don Owen is interested in, is getting the kids outside more?
Actually, that was her question of is there a way to get the kids outside? I think that's something we would definitely pass on to the school district. You know, I'm sure they hear that often.
It was in the newspaper.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that's where it came from. Right, right. Yeah. So, that there is some interest on their end of things too.
We're not sure of the details and where and what school and.
Stand outside five minutes more.
It was a strange article because it was mixed with some excess and issues.
And I didn't read the article.
We meet with them all the time.
But isn't that like the visiting naturists works because we go to the schools because they can no longer bus kids?
That idea.
So, if they want to go outside on their playgrounds, that probably works. But going.
Champagne's schools still come to us.
Do you? Okay. But it's just Urbana schools that?
They've, they started picking back up, but they're not near as consistent as the other schools. I mean, we have schools for Mohammed and other places come to us as well, but.
Doesn't always mean you're outside, but I would think the natural stuff would be a lot of outside activities.
The other comment I wanted to make too is pointing out the obvious. But just sort of tracking CPD's history, they were very single like we are at Brookins when they had their Leonard, old Leonard facility. It was basically one activity, one main activity at a time. Obviously, when you increase your gym size or have more offerings, you can facilitate three or four, or five or six or seven groups all at the same time. So, it's that dynamic. And it also trains your public to get ready that it is accessible. It's like, oh, we only go on Mondays. Instead of, we go four days a week. It's available to us on different. So, I think it's a mental shift. It's a community shift. And it's obviously a revenue and, you know, serving numbers shift. But we are fairly limited, at least at the Brookins facility, you know, the number of groups you can have in there doing an activity at the same time. I think that convolutes the schedule as well. So, everything sequentially happens instead of five things happening during a block of time to serve more people.
Well, I should, I don't want to leave.
I was saying, I think it's great that we're serving, we saw four thousand students through the early child school program.
Is that for year olds?
What's that group?
That's countywide or just Urban?
Up to four. So, it's two, I think it's three through four, three and four maybe.
And what do you, what do you have to, what's the qualifications to be part of that program or what are the criteria?
They are classified as at-risk youth.
It's forty-two hundred visits. So, it could have been the same.
Same kids. Okay. Thank you.
You know, if they have a class five days a week, you know, for a session, they're getting counted each time they meet.
So, if they're doing the kids in class. Do we have data on how many, I mean, on how many students we serve?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Would you like more information? We can put together more information.
I mean, as long as we have it, it's fine. I just, I don't need it.
Well, I didn't mention aquatics yet. So, I have to say one thing for them because I don't want them to be left out. So, with aquatics, the Crystal Lake Pool, don't quote me on the number. I believe our number was around sixty-four thousand visits this year. So, that's great. Obviously, when we designed the pool, we were shooting for sixty-one thousand visits. So, it was a good year from that standpoint. The weather was fabulous. And I always got to be mindful to point out when it's a great year and great weather because it's not always going to happen. But I did want to mention too that we had a total of thirty-three rentals this year, which is up from sixteen rentals the previous year. And six of those rentals were private rentals. And I believe all of those were evening rentals. That was a new thing that we started doing or advertising last year, if you guys remember correctly. When we built the facility, we were kind of under the impression that the lighting needed to be, we needed to add more lights. And we actually took lights out of the building project because it was expensive and it wasn't going to be worth the cost of putting those lights in. But then we had had the health department a year and a half ago evaluate the facility. And the lighting is adequate. And so, we were able to offer evening rentals. Again, six rentals, another three hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty for more lighting. At that time, we didn't feel that that was going to be worth it. But, so along with the rentals, we also did three movie nights at the pool. The first one, Tim and I actually went by there after another event and it was hugely successful. It was Moana, which was a big draw. We had three hundred and ninety-one people at that one. The others were not attended quite as well. But we showed Batman, about eighty-eight people. And then Finding Dory, we had ninety-three people. So.
I'm still pushing for Jaws, you know.
Well, you know, we are working on some more of the adult crowd type movies.
Yeah, not adult movies.
Yeah, but three hundred and two, I mean, what was it, six dollars for Moana?
They're all this, I think it was five. It was all the same.
Yeah.
Come in.
Yeah.
But it also costs you about three hundred dollars to show the movie.
For the copyright.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, but.
Their whole movies, well, it's tempting, but obviously we take the high road.
But it was a good event to add a little, we probably ended up getting some people to the pool.
I mean, I don't know what the staff time cost, but we didn't lose any money on that.
Right. And we probably get more people that have not been to our facility by showing movies. So, all in all, it was a really good year. So, that's what I have for you today on that.
If you have other questions or need more info, just let us know. We'd be happy to follow up.
Ready to move on? There was no new business removed from the consent agenda. So, we're on to comments from commissioners.
I don't know if I mentioned this at the study session, so I'm going to say it again. When I was at the meetings in Chicago, I met again Bobby Nance, who used to work for the Park District. I don't know, how long has she been gone? Six, seven years maybe?
Well, about eight, nine.
Nine, is it that long? She was just, she's really flourishing. She started her own business. She was an engineering person and then kind of got caught up into park stuff. And so, she's combining parks and numbers and has got a really good business going. And what she said to me that was the important thing was that she wouldn't be doing what she was doing if it hadn't been for the really good start that she got here at the Urbana Park District. And that didn't surprise me any, but it made me really happy because I think that's one of the things we really do well. We, you guys, do really well is that you allow people to expand and grow in their jobs. And I thought that was pretty terrific. At the same time, I was sitting, I had just sat down at a table and the woman at the table from Oak Park was talking about this underserved study program that she had, the session that she had just attended in, how interesting it was and fascinating. And she saw my Urbana tag and said, oh, that was your park district. I mean, she was, she was from Oak Park and probably they don't have a whole lot of underserved people there. At least certainly not to the extent that we do. But Monica and Kim's presentation about the work they did for us really struck some nerves at that meeting. Evidently, the room was just packed, I understand.
It was really good.
Yeah. So, it was, so we did, I mean, we did something that a lot of other people haven't done and that they found really interesting and important. So, a little pat on their backs for ourselves.
And I, as I had, we did a wrap-up of the conference. So, I told Nancy and staff this the other day. But it was so great to be in the spot where we were as far as doing the study, the actions, the goals we're setting, the commitment to serving the underrepresented, to see where we're at now, three years in, and then looking around the room and seeing that all those people are back where we were in two thousand and twelve. And they're just absorbing everything that they could get their mind wrapped around. So, it was really neat.
Yeah, I think so too. There's a little back patting.
I also sort of feel a lot of that too about the Park District and the innovative things that this Park District has done. I think the staff is absolutely amazing and how you take bad situations and turn them around and make them good situations. And the amount of study that goes in, the amount of thought that goes in, the amount of coordination that goes in, working with other units of government to help solve a problem, bringing things together. I've been very impressed and feel very privileged to have been on the board and participated and observed some of those, some of those aspects. I'm at a point in my life now where I am going to retire from the board. I was appointed to fill in for a retired board member for a few months before I was elected in oh-seven, which was the hundred-year anniversary of the Park District. And at this point, I'll be one year short of finishing my second term. So, I plan to finish up the end of April or when my replacement is named. And that'll give them, just short of a year, to try it out and see if it works. They can be elected. Take the test drive on it. So, again, I feel this has been a real privilege for me to have been on this board and have been very impressed with all aspects.
Thank you, Bob. I think we, staff all feel the same way. And we're very fortunate to have a great board that we do. You know, we hear other communities have different situations. And we're always pleased that Urbana stays focused on Urbana.
And I must say, really appreciate you've been an active board member. You haven't been overly bashful about giving your opinion. And that's exactly what we need.
Yeah, that's right.
It's people to think about the issues and share their opinions with the rest of the board and try to convince the others when you can. And you've done a great job of that. And we're certainly going to miss you when you go.
Yes, and I'm going to definitely miss this.
Even if we were thinking about your socks. The socks are a whole nother plus.
Well, my initial degree was in city planning.
Right.
And I became a social worker. So, this has been the one place that I can put my city planning.
Absolutely.
And I always drive by projects, construction projects. I always keep an eye on projects. It's been nice being on the finance committee and being able to talk about projects and encouraging the staff to bring those projects forward to present to the state board so that other places can see. so that other places can see the Douglas Creek Project and the Splash Project. So I think, you know.
Not just a bunch of country mice.
We're providing a lot of education for the Park Districts up in Chicago. Who have a lot more money.
Yeah.
And I think we use the University of Illinois resources a lot. And I think one of the things I'm really impressed with, and I think maybe even we need to acknowledge these people a little more, are the advisory people. You know, we have, we have UpDak, which we talk about a lot, but then there's also other committees that do a lot of work. The Natural Areas Committee. And I don't know that we ever acknowledge those folks. Maybe nice to list some of those committees in the program guides.
Do we, do we give them awards? Do we give them?
We do awards to the programs. It's part of our volunteer effort too. We should look at ways to improve that, but sort of.
Maybe listing them out so the people can see that not only is it UpDak, so you have your board, you have your UpDak, you have, you know, your different advisory committees. Because I think, you know, you folks really spend a lot of time studying problems and not just going out with a truck and a shovel and fixing a problem.
How big is the truck?
I think anytime that you're willing to, Corky and I talk about this a lot. Anytime that you're willing to step out of your comfort zone, to look at needs and how you can meet, you know, the community or the people in our community, and look back in the rearview mirror and see how far you've come is to be commended. It's not easy, you know, we have to always educate ourselves, reach out to different resources to kind of pull it all together, but I would have to say I'm pretty impressed myself to keep up the good work.
Yeah, you guys make us look really good.
We have to find our team, team roles, definitely. I think staff was just talking recently, I think at the conference wrap, of really the benefit we have with strong board, UpDak, committed staff, and now a foundation. It's like the four legs to a table, so I think good things should happen. Very pleased.
And that reminds me of a, one situation where a citizen in the community contacted the Park District because they were concerned about a piece of equipment at Carl Park. And several of the executive staff went out to talk to her. And her child was not age-appropriate for that piece of equipment. So instead of just saying, well, you know, you're, like, don't let your kid play on it for three years because he's too young. The staff went out and talked to them, listened to her concerns. Then they contacted the equipment company and found out, the equipment company had found out in the process that this was in fact unsafe and that they had retrograded it. And then through that process, the company gave us the retrograde to make the equipment safe. So it would have been very easy just to say, lady, you know, have your kid play on the other equipment. But by taking that time and listening to the person, it makes everybody feel like they're listened to. And you end up getting better results than if you just said, don't bother me.
Right, and then the rest of the kids using it were safe as well because of.
Right.
Oh, we're terrific.
Any other Commissioner comments? Okay. We now, next item up on our business is adjourned to executive session for discussing the exception, for discussing the limited purpose of discussing selection of a person to fill a vacancy in a public office and how we might go about doing that, so we.
I move we move to adjourned to executive session for the limited purpose of discussing the selection of a person to fill a vacancy in a public office.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that carries unanimously, so we will.